Oh, meeting's ordered. We're here to introduce, correct?
Yes.
And we're introducing the proposed budget. And the Fund Code zero one oh one general adopted, let's see. Adopted budgets, one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty. Adopted tax levies, one hundred and six thousand one hundred and fifty-one.
No, that will actually be adopted next month. This is your proposed.
Oh, well, you told me.
I know it's very silly. I'm sorry. But this is the formula.
Okay.
Adopted budget is eleven, one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Local road and street, can we just go down there? You want to leave the ag or?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Local road and streets, six thousand. Motor vehicle highways, sixteen thousand. Cumulate capital cigarette tax. What's the IMPV?
Improv. Improv, okay.
Improv, should make sense. Cigarette tax is one thousand five hundred dollars for a total of one hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty.
And then you got to, yeah.
You didn't say you said, Rick?
I know.
And it, and it, adopt, uh, adopted budget is twenty thousand. That's all? That's just introducing the budget for next year, correct?
Yes.
So do we need to vote on it?
No.
So we do?
All you do is introduce it.
Okay.
I'll control it.
I'll make, do I just make a motion or just call meeting to order? Or who?
You already called.
Unorder.
Yes, she'll close it out after you've done.
Okay. Uh, I'll go ahead and close the meeting.
Oh, you gotta make a motion.
Do we have a motion? You said no.
No.
Oh, I thought you said we had to.
No, that'll be next month.
Okay, all right.
All you're doing is introducing it and you might ask if there's any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I do. I have one question.
Very good.
Town council, it says ten thousand eight. On the next page.
Well, I don't know what to do.
I'm just wondering, why is it set at ten eight?
I think that was, that's a little bit less than, or a little bit more than what was last year.
Well, ten eight isn't that, uh.
Did I make a mistake on that?
We, there's only three of us, so we get three thousand. A piece, is that correct? So that should be nine thousand.
No, we get thirty-six hundred a piece, which would be ten eight.
Oh, we do get thirty-six?
Twelve times three is thirty-six.
Oh, okay. It is correct.
I was thinking it was.
My mind was.
Yeah, but that's, that's good to ask a question, though.
Okay.
And I got a question here. These are salary and wages based on this year's money?
Kinda, yeah. I, what I do, I do a worksheet and I go over what was spent and what was left. And I do kind of like a worksheet. I can show you what I do. This is, I can't look at this, what was spent.
Okay, I got you.
And then I can't adjust it.
I guess my question is gonna be, what is, I think we may discuss the possibility of, uh, employee's raise. That's where we did, uh, see about nothing that part of it, or?
No, that would be a reason for the department.
Uh.
The street and sewer?
Yes, the street and sewer.
Street. Okay, um, you can look down there and see if I budgeted it or not for street.
You say we are thinking about giving them a raise?
I think we should, need to be thinking about giving it, the way things have gone up. This, this is, yeah, we haven't talked about it at the board or anything yet, but I'm just wondering if we plan on doing that. I know we want to give our reserve for three hundred percent raise.
What else?
Our reserves, we can't give him three hundred percent.
He's making a joke. Three hundred percent or zero, zero.
Uh, well, my thing is, what about raises period? I mean, three, zero?
I think Brenda takes it out of your local road and street.
And she's always been, all that this year.
And we can adjust, we can still make adjustments because this is just introducing.
Okay.
So if we need to, you know, adjust them.
So by the end of the year, if we decide as a board to give out, uh, raise to the employees, then that's when they text like?
Yeah, I could do that. I could do that before the next meeting if, if we were adopted, all right?
Maybe talk about that in secret. All right, here's that. Want me to make a motion to close the meeting? I'll make a motion to close the meeting. Adjourn the meeting if you're done, ma'am. You're done?
I second it.
But may be properly seconded, adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Just call the meeting to order. It's blank.
Rick, you can leave one please.
You have a chance.
No. Does anybody want water to try and move it, Joe?
I don't have brown.
That's why I wanted a meeting to order.
Oh, she called.
Thank you very much.
Doesn't feel very cold. Did you just put them in?
No, we come in first, orange and high, no. Two's not. Open and door wasn't jolly. Your seal broke? No, somebody had a clutch.
I'm breathing. Give you a chance with the minutes?
Yes, Scott.
You got any questions about?
Speed pumps on me.
Speed pumps?
Speed pumps.
Pumps. Uh, the reason speed pumps aren't named is I've got, we're waiting the dump trailer. And what's the latest on the dump trailer? The three ton that we've been using for all these years finally came out. So there is one, and if I'm not mistaken, it's a seven ton or a ten ton, it's fourteen footer that, uh, we have.
That's the car we did.
Agreed to purchase. So that's, that's what the deal is on that. Uh, this, appearance by citizens, when, uh, Rick Shepard was here talking about the AMVets wanting to close the street. This says the seven, it's been changed to the twenty-first, I think, at the C D. That poker run?
They changed it after the meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's where I said it's been changed. Uh, and Rick, can you still make the twenty-first?
Yep, next Saturday. Yep, I'll be there. Uh, I'll be in town about nine o'clock in the morning, so I'll.
Go out there for you, okay?
I'll help Rick anyways.
Yeah, that's what you said. The Bolo Wrap, what's the latest on the Bolo Wrap? Are we getting it in yet?
Got it in.
And you're scheduled to have training?
October first.
Who with?
Uh, there's Sweets, Sweets or Indiana, you know where it's at?
Sweets, yeah. I said west or?
About Marion. Uh, Ron's going up there on the first. He's gonna be an instructor, so we got a, we got a class going on.
So you're gonna be an instructor of the Bolo?
Yeah.
You know what Bolo is, Janice? Oh, Rick.
Western Pie goes good with stuff on the helmet.
We used to have it at McDonald's when we first worked there.
It's a device that sends out an eight-foot Kevlar rope and wraps around a person, either leg or arms.
Knocks them down.
Well, hopefully doesn't knock them down, but it stops them from running or it stops their aggression. If that don't work, then we have to use other, other tools.
Think you're good, think you're good at throwing it.
And, uh, once, once, uh, Ron gets back, we'll, we'll do a demonstration. I'll show you what it is.
Who's gonna demonstrate on the? There has to be a young person. Too old to have that talent.
CJ, what you got going on?
Just, just pick it on.
Uh, CJ's retired Air Force also, Ron.
So?
Ron's retired Air Force.
So am I, but my uncle left that part out.
Well, are you retired or? I don't think she got out all day, medical discharge.
Medical retire.
Oh, so.
How many years did you have in, Daniel?
A little less than fourteen. My dad, twenty years Air Force, air pilot.
Oh, your Air Force guys are getting injured and stuff. What the heck they doing to you guys over there? We didn't have a problem in the Navy. Just don't do that.
No boats in Afghanistan.
Anybody got any other questions? We got the minutes from last month's meeting. If not, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I second it.
Motion been made, properly seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Then you're gonna get lost.
I don't think.
Motion carried, thank you. Of course, Scott is, uh, hunting hogs. This is Emmanuel Hawtun. Hawtun, he won't be with us. But he go to, they go down south somewhere.
Arkansas?
Arkansas, yes. Wild War, maybe.
That'd be somewhere.
The parents by citizens, seem like we have a couple out of town, but we'll let you tell. What you, what you got, Daniel?
Nothing, sir.
Come on, you're getting some.
No complaints, no one hollering at us?
No, no hollers.
I mean, I can.
I mean, I mean, look here long enough to have any of that complaints?
Oh, yeah.
Please ignore.
Well, technically, I've owned property here for the last twenty-five years.
So that makes you a citizen, ma'am. I know, I have too.
You ready, buddy? So on the, on the, on the JAG grant, we spent roughly about six, almost sixty-four thousand dollars. All right, so, and that's on the life and late readers, the three laptops and the vest. So that leaves about nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And we've, we've already ordered pouches for the vest. And that's come to nine, nine hundred and eighteen bucks. We'll have about ten bucks left over out of the sixty-four thousand and eight hundred dollars. And buddy, and you, you talk about pain in the butt dealing with a federal grant. It was two cents off last month, so we had to scramble and go through hoops and it was, it's insane.
Ron, I appreciate you doing that. That's really good.
So two cents.
This is a little bit of truth to that, but.
Two cents.
He watched, I mean, he was trying to learn.
Yeah. So, uh, we sure have that, the nine hundred and eighteen dollar invoice. Uh, I'll have it probably Monday and I'll, uh, I'll give it to Anita. And then that will be the last of that grant when it's paid. And we'll do it the same way, we'll overnight it to the people.
Well, I sent them certified.
Well, yeah, 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 that's fine. Yeah, just, however you done it.
The twenty-two thousand dollar check was sent right there and it's got lost, so we overnighted the second one of those.
Right.
Twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then this next go around, we sent them all certified.
Right.
We got copies of all of them.
So now for the Wayne County grant, we got, the radio's on order. We got the two AEDs. And, uh, they've arrived and then the Bolo wrapper arrived. It took longer on the Bolo wrap than I thought, but I had to fill out forms for the ATF.
You have the Bolo wrapping.
Yeah.
Can we see it, Rick, please?
Sure. And, uh, it's GS fourteen plus.
Can we get you down to Barton lot and take off?
Oh, yeah, let's go.
Slowly?
Yeah.
Only in the grass, not in the driveway.
I do not have a cartridge in it for obvious reasons, but this, this is what it looks like. And basically, when you turn it on, you get, see the line generates a laser? That's where the Bolo wrap's gonna hit, and you hit the button.
And how big is the thing?
Eight foot.
And the Bolo wrap fits in a cartridge?
And it's made of Kevlar, so it's, it's gonna be.
Cartridge that attaches to that?
Yeah.
How big is the cartridge?
Just a little bit bigger than that right here.
Looks like a toner cartridge for a.
I don't know, it's real thin, it's, it's made of Kevlar and it's about, it's eight foot.
It would have to be thin to get it all in there. Is it like a netting?
No, it's like a big cord, big cord. Big cord, big long cord that wraps around your leg.
Oh, it's just one cord?
One cord, eight foot long, and hits you and it starts wrapping. And then the ends of it are, is like a, like a small metal, uh. What they call, what they, what they call that cactus that got the little, the little spiny thing that sticks to your leg when you walk through them?
Like cocklebird?
Cocklebirds are nice, but.
Whatever, but it's like that, so when it hits and wraps your leg, it sticks to your, your clothing and stays that way.
What happens if you bare leg it?
Well, it is, it is what it is.
It's gonna stick.
It's gonna dig in.
It's gonna stick to your.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, but we're talking like real, real small. It's not like going, you know, it's not gonna be.
It's not like a, a taser.
It's not like a cast tail, you know, we're gonna sit there and beat them with a cast tail. All right, not a real cat, you don't worry. But like I said, this is, they treat this the same as a fully automatic weapon. Class three, had to do it in the F E D form, ridiculous, but whatever, sir rules.
Fully?
Yeah. Class three, they, class three. So anyway, this is what it is, and, uh, Ron's gonna go to, go to, uh, class on, um, October first.
Who, what departments have it so far?
Very, very little.
High tech, redneck, right here.
Nobody in Wayne County's got that. Yeah.
They don't?
No one around here's got, no one in Hancock County, Henry County.
You foresee that?
We're going to Swesther to get this training done. I would have about ninety miles away.
Swesther.
Swesther.
You foresee that in the future for the other departments?
Yes, yes, another tool. I mean, whether, whether it's gonna, we, we may never use it, but it'd be an option for it. If someone's, if someone is, you know, is aggravated and we're trying to de-escalate it and it's not really working, then we'll, we'll try this tool, other tools.
So we have one, so one, whoever goes on duty will have it in their vehicle.
Yeah, all right, it's gonna be, it's gonna be here to say when they come on duty, they just grab.
Clips to your belt at this point.
Once they get qualified, right, by year.
Yeah, they, they gotta be qualified.
Yeah, yeah. We need to have proper training, we're not gonna just nilly-willy it.
What all are you qualified to train?
Who?
And there's a list, I mean, sometimes if you would, maybe for the next meeting, if you could make a list and let us have it appreciated, just for our own knowledge. Cause I know you've been getting qualified in a lot of things where you could, and you're able to teach them.
It's the cheapest way to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Are you gonna teach us classes on the first?
No, 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 I'm getting my, my cert, so I'm qualified to teach it. You pay for one person to get a cert and then they can come back and teach four or five people instead of having to send six people to apply.
Yeah, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars for the class.
Use that Walmart money.
You still got it. I know, I seen it, I see, you got it in there.
Did you ask about?
No, that's the stuff.
That's coming with ten cartridges, you get it, that Bolo wrap?
Yeah, 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 very in there. If you wanna see what cartridge, I'll show you real quick.
Do they have an expiration date for them?
I don't think so, cause there's nothing, it hurt, it, there's nothing inside of it except for, uh.
Well, what propels it? Gas?
I, I don't have the class, but I would guess there's some type of small charge, uh. You know, whether it's like a primer or whether it's.
Some kind of gas?
CO2, nitrogen, I'm not sure. I, this is what it looks like.
Let's see a break trial light then. What, uh, throws that out there?
What propels it?
Well, I don't know, that's why I got, on tasers, it uses a, uh, it uses the gas. But this right here, it uses a different technology. That's why they had to classify it as a class three weapon instead of a. Yeah.
Well, there's some type of charge in there.
Yeah, then they're charging here of some sort, and it's not, and it's not gas. So that's why, but that's what it looks like. Well, look at, it's not gonna go off.
Looks like a toner cartridge.
That's what it is, and it's got an eight foot cord.
Now, why do you say it's not gas?
Because if it was gas, then it would, it would not be regulated. I don't know if it's got like a little miniature airbag thing in there or what, you know, but it's got some sort of explosive in there that shoots out the cartridge. Ron, Ron's gonna learn about it when he goes to class, so.
Yeah, he'll brief us on that next month, maybe.
It's not done yet.
No.
And that, and that was about fifteen hundred dollars for that thing.
Wow.
And the cartridges.
Which is all, which, which is all grand money.
Yeah, Wayne County took care of us on that.
Well, I think we got fifty-two dollars, but that's neither here nor there.
Uh, we had one driver, driving while suspended, uh, a license suspended, one of those.
When, if somebody gets, do they get taken to jail or just somebody?
This was an infraction. And, and if it's a, if it's the misdemeanor version, they've requested that we cite him in the court, which is what we usually do. Unless it's someone who's got a exorbitant amount of stops for driving while suspended and kinda just skirts the system. You know, if they got fourteen driving while suspended, but they don't show up to any of the court hearings, then we'll just lodge them. We'll just lodge them. But that, that, that's typically, typically we just cite him in. Uh, I did, I purchased a slide for my firearm. I'm like, if I show this to you yet later or not, but, uh, it's, it's for my, um, duty weapon. My current slide, I could not mount an optic to it without spending money to get it milled, and I wasn't gonna do that. We were trying, so, uh, I bought one of those.
What's something like that cost?
Like two hundred and fifteen dollars. And then on the, on the charger, uh, Brian, cause we were getting it to, uh, there was a vibration on that charger. So we had Brian, uh, take it to the garage, his garage, and, uh, he inspected the struts. They were fine, the brakes, he had to, uh, replace one slide pin on one of the calibers. He replaced two sway bars that were loose. Uh, he balanced all four tires and then the frame alignment. And then also, uh, um, I replaced the rear balance. You know, that black piece on the back of the car somehow came up missing, so. Uh, we end up, uh, getting that and, uh, snapping it on, it just snapped right on, so. That's, that's pretty much it. Seven tickets and, oh, sorry, six tickets and then seven warnings.
Anybody have any questions for Rick? Make motion to accept, please, from Ford.
I'll second it. Motion's been made, properly seconded, to accept proof of support from Officer Bush, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carried, thank you. It'll be Rick. Superplanned operations. Uh, seems to be flowing pretty good. Mine flushed before I left here to have the meeting. Uh, our lead's not here, the superintendent. Things seem to be, I talked to Doug the other day, he said that they've been talking, communicating, so things seem to be pretty good out there so far, knock on wood. Waste water treatment, monthly report.
In August, we took in fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and, um.
Only you.
That we spent eighteen thousand one fifty-four. Uh, so far this year, we have received one hundred and seventeen thousand five eighty-eight and we have dispersed one hundred and eighteen thousand and forty-three dollars in change.
I've seen it a lot worse than that.
I have too. I've seen it worse than this. We cross our fingers. Uh, overdue sewer is six thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and overdue trash is seventeen hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Hang on, August first, on our utility bill, and we had thirteen accounts that was in the ninety days. But we got payments in almost, under the Port Treasury, only had to do three new sewerings in August. And this time, we only have twenty-five outstanding sewerings yet to be paid through Wayne County Traders Department. Sewerings are a pain in the rear, but it's, we have to do it. It's, it's money that we wouldn't have, you know? And here we, on my report, I listed what we've taken in in the last ten years on sewerling collections. Uh, two thousand twenty-three, we took in seven hundred and dollars. And twenty-two, we took in over four thousand dollars. Twenty-one, we took in almost four thousand dollars. And twenty, we took in almost five thousand dollars. Two thousand nineteen, we took in almost eleven thousand dollars. And two thousand.
So see, so when times were good, you had more people still behind, when times were good. Now they're bad.
They're, they're bad now because after COVID, everything is, some of the pumps have doubled in price.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
Cheating.
Yeah. And in two thousand seventeen, we took in eight thousand seven hundred and sewerings. Two thousand sixteen, we took in almost nine thousand. Two thousand fifteen, we took in almost seven thousand. And two thousand fourteen, we took in almost eight thousand sewerings. There are a lot of work, believe it or not.
I wish you could charge more for the work you do.
At one time, we had over a hundred sewer, uh, seven sewerings. Right now, we only have, uh, twenty-five. But people are realizing that if they get a sewerling, they're gonna have all these other.
Costs.
Costs, yeah, twenty-five dollars to record it, twenty-five dollars to release it, and twenty dollars, Wayne County charges to put it on their screen, so that's seventy dollars.
It should be like two hundred dollars, cause that's your time.
And, uh, we, we don't make anything extra for it, but, uh, it's one, it's something you have to do.
I don't know how Carmel does it. I'm sure they charge more than seventy dollars for.
What sort of money is that, Carmel? Who's getting sewerling there?
We also shut it off, shut everything off.
Yeah, we, we don't shut it off.
Yeah, we can't shut it off.
They can still grow and flush. Okay, that's all I have here.
Dig it up, put a valve on somebody's one who are crying.
Anybody got any questions for Nate?
Pump don't work.
I'll make the motion, we accept Nina's, uh, utility report. Anyone else I'd like to hear?
I second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made, properly seconded, to accept Nina's, uh, report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Bob's not here, did you, uh, well, you kinda dropped the gun there, you didn't let me read the other two in front of you. Facilities coordinator, I mean, I said you jumped ahead on me, we didn't talk about facilities or, which they're not here anyway, so it doesn't matter. Uh, Facilities Coordinator Report is Doug Wheeler, uh, I do know that he was waiting, uh, for that duck trailer to be able to finish the, uh. Hump, speed humps, I did notice the speed hump sign was up, going south.
That's true.
So, uh, people know that it's there.
Just half of it's up, right? Still just half?
Yeah, goes to that, and that's when it broke, they had the half.
You, you know what, buddy, that trailer, was that the town's trailer?
Yeah.
That was a good trailer.
We had it for a long time.
It only had thirty-five higher pound axle.
So what we're gonna do, we, they're gonna put the, the leaf sucker on it and just leave it on.
Yeah, that would be a good fit for that.
If they don't need it, we'll park it out at the sewer plant or underneath the carport out there.
We bought that new.
Excuse me?
We bought that new.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we got our lines for that.
Oh, yeah, if you're hauling asphalt and that little small one, you guys done good.
Yeah, we done, they're overloaded.
Well, I mean, that, that's been what they can do with it, around like centerville.
But you're gonna fix it, they're gonna fix it.
There in the walls, they just pull out the stuck.
Uh, did billing inspector pop in today, I noticed, I thought yesterday, he said he was gonna be coming down to look at thirteen, Washington.
I haven't heard anything, you hear anything?
I know there's, uh, this year, there's been one, two, three, four, six, uh, living quarters built, if you will, uh, for town. Uh, and I'm not sure, but I don't know how much more we could add to it because of the capacity of the sewer plant, we're pretty much at capacity.
I'm guessing probably eighty-six to ninety percent, somewhere around there, yeah.
So.
Cause we did lose some, you know, back, from houses burning and stuff.
That's six, yeah, that was.
We had some houses razed in town, we lost some.
Some of them get back. Okay, street report. Okay, on eight five, they poured some concrete on Maple, uh, picked up the tire, Greens Fork alignment, put the tire on the mower, mowed the grass at the city building. Uh, they removed the forms and cleaned up tools, uh, is that up on Maple, the forms?
Yeah.
So the one in front of your house, Brendan's house is done, not done?
It's not completed, no, they still, they're still up there, the street's gotta be dead.
They put a helipad over there for you, what do you have?
Yeah, that, they're working on that trailer for the soft dog.
Yeah, and he's found parts and stuff for pretty reasonable, I think he can basically, you know, um, first, he thought it was gonna be expensive, but then he did have that face and, like, they, that.
Okay.
And I did get a call actually from Lees.
Asking for leave?
Lees, is there any problem with taking the chickens out here, it's kosher, and when they usually can get them, she wasn't with Converse.
Oh.
That many?
Yeah, she said she probably could take them all, I doubt it.
Where have they been taken to leave to, do you know, Rick?
Down there.
Oh, we have.
I thought they took it down there to the, oh, by the crossing?
Offset area before they.
Yeah, oh, but.
To what?
Yeah, that's probably what this would be, so either, I don't think they called it that.
It's not like they're, they don't know what they're all talking anyway. Either or, probably wouldn't matter, uh. I'll make a motion, we, uh, accept a street report, it's not all we're taking, nobody here doing it, but. Most have been made proper seconds, accept a street report, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say aye.
We paid thirty-three hundred dollars for that trailer move, the real one.
It's, it's.
In twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, I thought it'd been.
Yeah, you got your money down, uh, out of that trailer.
And then the, the other one we're gonna buy, like, only ten thousand, so, but it's three times, yeah, it's three times that.
Yeah, it's, it's got seven thousand pound axles on.
Yeah.
Storm grains, unfinished business, storm grains at Maple Street, how close is the one in front of Brendan's house, your house, uh, to being done? Didn't they pour concrete on it already and?
A lot of it's been done, but they still have to, uh, do some, uh, street, they have to get their street, and they, they have to fix that.
They don't have this hole in line.
What she said?
They just need some hot mix.
I thought it's gold inlay?
Oh, yeah, I think they're building bomb shelter down there.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
You know, they, they done a good job, they saved your pot money.
Oh, I know, it looks, it looks good, I've been down there when, when they were doing it, it was, it looked a lot of work.
You get a quote on that, they would give probably ten, fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh, easy.
Or maybe even, uh.
Five more now.
Yeah, so we got talented people.
Okay, speed humps on South Main, we already discussed them, I think it's pretty much, uh, but to get the dumb trailer, they'll re, put that in down there. And I'm, would like to think that, my thing is, if you've got a trailer like that, don't go get enough just to finish that speed hump. Fill that up and make as many speed humps as you can out of it, and locate them, like, we need some on North Main Street, we're gonna need some on Green Street, and anywhere there's a stretch, people are gonna speed.
Yeah, request, uh, I guess it was yesterday, for North Main, did you, I said, we're all, everybody's.
We've been talking all along.
And I think we're here on everyone.
Yep. Fire prevention ordinance before we send it to the publisher. Put that out, maybe right here.
You got a copy of it?
Kathy Keefe?
And, no, that's not yet, you got it someplace there, underneath your, right there on top, with the green thing on it, that's yours.
The one that says, hey, buddy, this is.
Yeah, and if it's approved next meeting, you can take that one home and put in your book.
My book right here, huh?
Oh, okay, you can leave it in your book here, or Kathy's book here, and I think Scott's is.
Do you remember what it was, when, when, uh, added the change, needed, uh?
It was the, um, distance, distance.
Oh, the pile to be burned should be less than a thousand cubic feet.
Mm-hmm.
Well, now what we, we was changing?
I think that's what it was.
How many, what'd you say, a thousand?
Cubic feet, for example, ten foot by ten foot by ten foot, that's a heck of a fire.
A lot of heat, that's about the size of that, what that over there was.
There's a lot of stipulations, so if you want a, a fire in town, you got to know.
Yeah, but my thing is, it's just like I noticed the other day, the fire department evidently will go around, they set themselves to where they will go around and burn down, uh, places that you have. Say for instance, you have a garage, like they did that on South Main, if you didn't want anymore, but the problem come up, how long is the remain gonna lay there?
Well, and the only thing we have to compare it to is when Johnson's place built, burnt down, and North Green Street. House there, do you remember that lot?
Oh, that, uh.
Yes, and they, and they had such lots, youngers.
Yeah, the youngers.
And we finally had to tell them that, that they had so many days to clean it up, and I noticed throughout this fire ordinance, there is nothing here. Designating cleanup and how long they have.
And I think what needs to be done with that is that if the fire department, bless their heart, it's gonna be good enough to burn it down, they need to tell them how long they've got to get rid of that. That's got to be a part of the, the, the deal with burning something out for somebody for it.
And of course, he's going out there regularly and piling stuff on top of it and catching it back on fire.
Bull hurt.
Oh, no, no, flame, shooting ten, one feet high.
So here's the old one right here, for about a week, and, uh, the pipeline, and the new one is a hundred feet, here's your, here's the old one, if you weren't prepared, page two.
Well, it was, uh, even back then, it said ten by ten by ten feet.
But back to the cleanup, I, we have to, somewhere to put that in there, I would think.
Uh.
And if the fire is not called in by a neighbor, it's not gonna be put out, they're gonna continue to pile debris and burn. It.
Well, I guess, and my thing is, the town of Greensport aren't, they're not the ones saying having the fire department burn that down. So it's on the fire department, that's township, that's not the city of Greensport, it's on them to, uh, tell their people when it's gonna be cleaned up by.
Yeah, you hear that, or you don't allow the fire department to have, have to have burns, you said, if you're gonna burn down, then you're responsible to make sure that they.
So are we making two cali, categories there, if the fire department did it, then they need to tell them to clean it up versus if the house just burns down?
Well, that would be the same, there's gonna be a fire, well, I figure a lot of that's got to do with insurance, when you gotta, talking about Kathy's not a schedule burn like that one was with the fire department.
That's what I'm asking you, are we gonna go with two different scenarios there?
I like the city.
Doug tells them if they set it on fire and take care of it, or if it accidentally burns down, like the Younger's. We finally had to tell them Johnson owned that property, Younger's husband.
Right.
That they had to clean it up.
We would have to, uh. We're having a senior moment.
You have to use your existing ordinances for.
Well, you're gonna have to wait for the fire marshal, one, to have other inspections done, you can't do anything until they bless it, and then I would think after that, they're gonna have to be given some type of, ten days, a month, I don't know.
Thirty days, sixty days, past the fire mar, marshal.
Just like over there, the fire we just happened, so the fire marshal reports, he's gonna be sending me to war, that part's gonna be done, but then the insurance company's gonna come out, that might take another week.
Yeah, but you heard what the fire marshal said, he said the insurance company is not gonna send an inspector out there, that's what his job was.
No, they won't send, no, no, not, not with his job, but, but, but they'll send someone, they'll send someone out to, to look at it and say, hey, yeah, or get pictures or whatever. But, you know, if they're not gonna file, I guess it don't matter, then, but at some point, you're gonna have to say, hey, you know, thirty days, need, it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, that's what I have to be adding to this ordinance before we change it.
How do you worry? Is that your copy, old copy, really, or?
That's Kathy's.
That might be something to look at.
You can keep them, I've got this one here.
Adam about, this is the old one.
Say what?
It might be something we need to ask Adam about, we could get ourselves a situation.
Well, I think, hasn't Adam already looked at this once?
Yeah, he's, okay, this one, nevermind it.
Well, I understand, he's looked at it and, and, uh, I guess he wasn't told to add anything to it, correct?
The only changes they made was, um, Kevin's, we changed that down.
So the only thing I'm saying is, I could see us getting snar, snared into something where somebody couldn't afford to get rid of their building to begin with, and it got burned down by the fire department, nice training, whatever. Now here we come, you gotta get rid of it, you gotta get rid of it, which they didn't have the money to burn it, they probably don't have the money to get rid of.
So.
And then it could be sitting there, and then are we gonna start fining them and?
I guess my question is, does the fire department need to come to us to see if they can burn down a house that's in the city and not in the township?
Kind of what I'm thinking, maybe.
Well, I mean, that way you're gonna have, you're gonna know who's gonna be responsible for cleaning it up.
Yeah, cause the fire department's not gonna clean it.
It would help if the fire chief had been here, but he's out, should have been, he can't help that. So this, as far as I'm concerned, this is not really going to work yet.
Alright. He's first nature.
If we ran the fire department, it'd be one thing.
Oh, exactly. Exactly.
But we don't.
Exactly, and I don't want them to think that they have to get our permission.
Right.
But they kinda do, so that we can make sure that it's gonna be a clean process where everything is taken care of.
Yeah, or it needs to be in that thing saying, if the fire department chooses to burn, uh, something down for someone.
And like I say, this has been written so that it kinda fits for the township, which is outside of the city limits also.
I got a copy, please, too, if you wanna see it, to leave it to.
Of what?
Yeah, the townships.
Well, he told me this was gonna cover both of them, that's what he told me when he did this one.
Here's the township, right there.
I mean, to me, it's almost like if the fire department is going to initiate a fire burn, then between the homeowners and the fire department, their responsibility to clean up the mess when they're done. Not leave it up to the town to go after, you, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah, but you, but you were talking that air force stuff, I couldn't understand what you're saying.
You know who's gonna be, if it goes bad though, it's gonna be us trying to get it taken care of.
Exactly, so that's why I said, this always be put in line before we program things, so that this is smooth process.
We think that would have to change. Well, maybe the fire department has, um, maybe they can do fines, and maybe they have the ability to make sure things happen, I don't know.
See, they've got the issue also for township, uh, illegal fire, five hundred dollars, huh? Which you see, at one time, if you remember one thing you wanna change, they'd put down a thousand dollars, well, hell, if you can't pay your sewer, you can't pay a thousand dollars for us.
You know, Kyle got that twenty-five dollar fine.
Yeah, we will, uh, we'll look at township. So, review the new file, okay, so we've reviewed it, and it still needs a little work, and then we will send it to the publisher.
We'll give it back, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, new business, Halloween, trick or treat, the thirty-first is on a Thursday, that sounds very good to me, trick or treat.
Thank you.
Would you agree?
Okay, I didn't know whether you wanted to have it during the week or not.
I think normally, we've, we've had it before on Thursday, on the thirty-first, cause it keeps everybody from out of town coming up here.
Or it causes more people to come into town, like Centerville decides to have their little, uh, Saturday.
Six to eight, six to eight, or five thirty to seven thirty.
What do you?
It, it, either way, it's fine, cause it doesn't really matter what you guys put down, they, they start, they start whatever, they start what they want to, usually about five thirties when they start, yeah, like with it.
Five thirty to seven thirty, or?
Eight, seven thirty.
Don't you remember how exciting it was to be that age, wanting to go trick or treating?
No, I can't remember how old Toddie was to be sixty.
Oh, I think it's fine, you see the kids.
So I'll make the motion that we, uh, have trick or treat for Halloween on the thirty-first, which is a Thursday, from five thirty to seven thirty.
I've already got enough glow sticks for this year, so.
What will the rain date be? We're not gonna have one.
The very next day that's not raining, of that, no, uh.
Well, it could be, cause that, that'll be Friday.
Rain day will be to be decided.
Yeah, if it's gonna rain Thursday, Friday, Saturday, then.
I second it.
Motion's been made properly seconded to have trick or treat on the Thursday, the thirty-first, five thirty, seven thirty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say aye, thank you. Uh, got any warrants?
Plenty of them.
Excuse me?
I said plenty of them. Pictures. There's the warrants, and there's the, hey. Thank you. I took the money for the, the, the new trailer out of three different places.
Brendan, uh.
You don't have any money left either.
I need nine hundred and eighteen dollars, that's the last of our grant, if you can find that.
You've got that, otherwise you don't have any money left for the rest of the year.
Got the Walmart grant still.
Nine hundred dollars. Mine went on that trailer.
But, but we.
But, but we should get reimbursed, uh, the, uh, for three of October, so all that'd be made whole.
Okay, yeah, with what you got going on.
Nelson, uh, one of the places, he sent a check to Nelson, has received it, 'cause we got to bring it back today, we got to certify, but we still have.
They say that we certified, that's three to five days anyways.
Yeah, it was smaller than that, it was only fifteen ninety, I'm concerned about the process, there's tens of thousands.
Oh, that's where we got the, uh, trailer.
Oh, okay. Radio shop, you'll see that on there for three ti- there's three times, I did, took it out three different places. And what's Baycom?
That, Baycom is the laptops, seventeen thousand dollars for laptops.
Those first ones, the recorder, and then the first quarter, whatever you see there, those are all his grant stuff.
Okay.
Go on, 'cause we did those two weeks ago.
Right, and, uh, I'm not gonna get you in the next round, that, that they're doing, it starts another month, I'm, I'm gonna stay out a year, but next year's grant, we're gonna try to get radar signs, more radar signs. And then whatever else you guys can think of.
I wish we could get one this year.
Nice to meet you, Carl.
Yeah, I can, I can.
You just can't get one, can you?
I can, I can get about fifty-five thousand dollar worth of sandwich makers, but I couldn't get a, get a car. Right, that's called Flocker, and we can do that as well. Flocker.
No, the readers.
The readers.
The readers.
That goes to a, a different database, but that is used a lot in Marion County, solving crimes.
It's used a lot in a lot of places.
Yeah, they just run, just run, just run plates, and then if there's a crime, oh, we need a blue van. The data's there already. Pretty neat. Study.
Paul, a study? Both?
You have to have a stu- just for the trash, if you, if you want the sewer, just the trash.
Oh, no, not for trash, I'm, for sewer, you have to have a rate study. So to raise the trash, we don't have to have a rate studies?
When is our contract up, that's a five-year contract?
I thought it was this year, I'm pretty sure, we need to tell this.
So we're gonna have to put out, like, Kathy, just ask her, we have to put out a request to the, uh, trash people to come, put bids?
I think as long as we stay under, that, uh, what, what is it, we stay under fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
For the year, we don't have to put bids out, we just keep rolling? Well, we don't know what they're gonna, they're gonna raise, it's, it's gonna be unreal.
Well, well, we won't know till we have them here, they always come.
Oh, yeah, they're happy to come.
Buck comes from.
I hope.
What, did Buck retire?
I don't know.
I'd heard that he did.
Oh, they didn't release the math too, for. Bring me, bring me up today, how much out of pocket is the town paying versus what it costs?
Different, different amounts, they charge us tw- twenty-three hundred a month to come through, and, uh.
No, she means, we charge the town people ten dollars, or it's a cost us per unit.
Thirteen something, right?
That's what I'm looking for, right?
Yeah. Let me look, I'll show you, I think I've got a unit, or is it on a bill? I won't, won't be a bit surprised to see it go sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars a month.
Ah, we'll just let it burn in the middle of the street.
Oh, okay.
Now, we feed it, uh, every month, I call it feeding month, but we're sure every month, sometimes it's two hundred, sometimes it's three, sometimes it's five, sometimes it's six.
But what's it per unit?
I'm looking it up, and I got it right here too.
I'm pretty sure it's just a couple of dollars, couple of dollars difference.
It's twelve or thirteen and something per unit.
Twelve seventy.
Yeah.
Twelve seventy, or two seventy a unit, we're feeding it monthly.
Yeah.
And it does expire December.
December thirty-first, I think.
So that's definitely something we gotta get on the agenda.
Now, we, uh, you guys had a gig for doing it for five years, 'cause everything went crazy.
How much did they pay, eleven, ten?
Twelve seventy, it's, we are charging them twelve seventy, and we pay the rest.
Yeah, twelve seventy's still cheap.
No, that, I said that backwards, with, they are being charged ten, and we are paying twelve seventy.
But your problem is, they got people in town that don't pay.
Right, and you can't lean trash.
We can still lean sewer, that's not the only utility.
You lean sewers and weeds, but not trash.
You can turn trash into a collection agency. They've never charged us a fuel surcharge, they stuck with what they said it would be.
When you collect the money you need, you don't, um, apply the first money towards, towards the trash?
Yep, yep, you're having to, if they only make a partial payment.
Oh, it goes towards trash? So the sewer, alright, so, they play the game, I guess, you just have to, but you guys spend a lot of effort to collect on it, it's kinda silly.
They pay more than fees to land county, for sewer and brush.
And how many units, how many units is he, he's picking up from seventy-nine places? We're paying a hundred and seventy-nine. Hundred and seventy-nine. That's what we're paying for, that's what the contract has been the whole time I've been here.
The trash only, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we, what we just do, about a hundred.
Sewer and trash customers, a hundred seventy-eight, sewer only thirty-eight, and trash only two, it's on the top of your report.
So, was it one seventy-nine plus thirty-eight, you said?
One seventy-eight plus thirty-eight.
How much does it cost, like, for, like, for people outside of town, the trash?
What's your trash count up there?
Oh, okay, uh, sewer and trash, I'm just, okay.
Sewer and trash, so this is having a.
We've just been doubling it down here. I'm waiting.
I thought we were supposed to be burning it in the street.
Yeah, there you go, you can up there, we don't care, you're out of town.
Fifteen dollars and twelve cents.
A month?
How did you get that?
I don't know, I just called Rumkey.
I, I called, I paid thirty-three.
A month?
Yes, uh, it was ninety-nine dollars.
They, well, them paying means you.
And that's supposed to be a senior discount.
Yeah, it was.
And you're only paying fifteen a month? That's what our last bill was, yeah.
Because of disabled veteran discount, maybe?
Maybe.
I bet you did, because I paid ninety-nine dollars for three months.
Half the time.
In advance.
Yeah.
Well, good for you.
Good, once a week.
Yeah, fifteen, twelve.
A month?
I'll make a motion, we accept the warrants.
I second it.
Motion been made, proper seconded, accept the warrants, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pros say aye.
What'd you say?
You said that, after she wanted brownie.
Uh, anybody got anything else they wanna bring up, Nada, Brenda, Kathy, me?
Need you guys to. Um, I messed up, um, Sterling, I always call it Darlin', Sterling's check last month, so I had to reissue it. So I need you guys to re-sign, please, please. And I've got the hole behind it for your referencing, you wanna see it, but, our check was for, ended up being for fifteen dollars.
Oh, that's that new stuff, it's bad.
Look at your tough man, what happened to him?
No, I'm cutting through them, the nuts are in there, they're even.
Well, I put over a couple of ones, and I make them healthy.
Sure, healthy dessert. I hope you use that chiller, that turns different colors.
You can get them chocolate chips.
These are good, too.
Two things I can't wait for, this Brownies and this check.
There's a re-sign something. A re-sign something, Brenda, bring the check.
Oh, you didn't get it?
Well, I've got some big, full length piece taken there.
That's it, right there. There's one for the correction, and I'll need to get, um, Scott to sign that later. Yes, please, thank you.
So, if there's nothing anybody needs to bring up, I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Uh, seconding?
Motion been made, proper seconded, adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
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 Most of the carrots.
Trash fire.
The adjourn. Wes, you okay?